Others in the system or outside the system to look at some of those creative solutions. I know that conversation has been happening and it's interesting and it's been a joy to see some of that creativity that's coming out around sharing those resources and what their thoughts are and really getting each other's feedback on that.
Could I suggest perhaps that, can you hear me? Okay. Could I suggest perhaps that as we get closer to the beginning of the opening, whatever kind of opening that is, that we could send you a memo with some of the plans that have been developed up to that time? Because obviously this is a work in process and we're in the middle of closing down and just thinking about reopening. But I suspect that, you know, the right people are working on it and we'll have more to share then. We could either put it on an agenda when school opens up or send you a memo, whichever you like.
So I think of all the equally concerning issues, this one, this single issue is still raising its head above all the other equal issues. You know, it's just, it's a big question mark if we're going to do this and help all the kids who need these kinds of supports. Thank you both.
I'm going to turn this over to Autumn. It's just one particular change. I wanted to make sure you understood it clearly and we're in support.
Thank you and good afternoon, everyone. So as the board is aware, Colorado statutes require the adoption and revision of certain policies and regulations in the district's Student Rights and Code of Conduct booklet and must be approved by the board. So each spring, we submit proposed revisions, additions, and deletions of such policies for board action so it can be included in the next year's Student Rights and Code of Conduct. And there's actually three policies for which revisions are being proposed for the next school year. And these revisions are based on changes in statute from this year and last year that are all effective for the next school year. And these three policies are being presented, as Sandra mentioned, for the first reading and at the next board meeting, they would be presented for a second reading. And I'm happy to go through and explain each of the proposed edits, but I wanted to also check to see if you prefer to just open it up to questions or would like to go through each of those edits.
I think just questions would be my recommendation.
Board members, do you want to, do you want to have Autumn just run us through or have you had enough time to consider what was in the packet?
So just on that first one, the updated excused absence for behavioral health concerns, that still needs to be called in by a parent that there's a behavioral health concern for. And I've heard this referred to as mental health days. Is that what we're talking about here?
Yes, I think, yeah, it goes under the excused absences portion. So all the other excused absences are normally done and I think that's through parents calling in.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Again, when I joined the board, we used to be really nitpicky about language. First, we had Jim Hayes back in the day, but we would spend hours. And I just have one little question mark and I had to go find which one of these it was.
Can I have you to change that to?
A few times you actually mentioned on versus in the district vehicle. And I don't know how important it is to say on versus in, but it strikes me that usually people are in vehicles. I actually looked at the, the policy language that just came from it. It actually says in the vehicles in there as well. So just a little comment. Yeah, I think it showed up twice, but that's what I remember. Okay, whatever. Any other comments or questions in that regard? Okay. If there are no questions at this point, it strikes me we'd be able to bring these three policies back on the following consent agenda. Any issues with that from board members? Okay. Thumbs up. All right. So thank you, Autumn.
Brett and Dave loading up information here and getting on screen. You were very hopeful that this would be as efficient as the other items, but I highly doubt it. This is, this is the big topic of the evening, right, is what does this budget look like? How do we prioritize our expenditures? How do we balance all of the competing needs in the context? And then when will we know what our income will be? How quickly will we be at that time ready to adjust our budget? And all of those things is what we're here to talk about tonight. We daily are getting more information. I believe there's more pertinent information just today that will be shared with you as well. So one thing to keep in mind is that we are in good company. This is not just something happening in our district or our state. It's happening everywhere. And the biggest questions I have are, do we strike the right balance between cutting ongoing money and one-time money in year one and year two? How many, how many years will it be before we climb out of this? And are we making the right decisions in the moment for next year's budget? And I remain convinced that there's really no way to know. We all just have to make the best judgments we can in the moment and hope that it doesn't turn out a year from now to have been a bad decision. There's just too many moving parts and too many unknowns. So I think you all are smart and thoughtful and we'll, we will move forward and just keep adjusting as we get more information. So who wants to lead out, Dave? Dave, we still can't hear you.
Sorry about that. I think I get the hang of this, right? Yeah, thanks. I'm going to start off with just some opening comments and I'm going to turn it over to Brett Parsons, our budget director. He'll walk through the detail of the presentation. As always, we, we welcome any questions tonight. I think we also have an opportunity to answer many more questions between now and time when we adopt the budget. So don't feel that there's a need to get everything out today, but we do have a little bit of time, but not much. As, as most of the boards are aware, we are required to adopt a budget by June 30th. That is a legal requirement. Also included in that legal requirement is another piece of statutory language that requires us to propose a budget 30 days prior to the beginning of the fiscal year. So as we enter this budget presentation and the materials that are included in your packet, I want you to just keep in mind that one of the purposes of tonight's agenda is to meet the statutory requirement of the proposed budget. We do plan on bringing another proposed budget to the next board meeting. So just understand that there's going to actually be two swipes at that. But again, the purpose here is to meet the statutory requirement. Typically, at this time of year, we would be submitting a proposed budget and I think probably true for most of the, the last 14 budgets I've been involved in, they typically don't change much between this time and when we adopt the budget. That's simply not going to be the case in, in, in light of the COVID-19 stay-at-home orders and then everything we're dealing with in the state budget. As a result, really feeling the pain of that. So we will be bringing, we do plan on having an adopted budget ready. I believe it's June 23rd is what we have penciled in. And, and our plan will be to, to have that meet the end of the statutory requirement at that point. We continue to, to model a range of 15 to 28 million as, as possible decreases in the state. So, so keep that in mind as we go through the presentation. Also, keep in mind that the, the budget presented tonight in the packet is purely a, an estimate on our part of staff, mostly on Brett and I, in, in what we think may happen. He'll go through some of that detail with you. We anticipate we may learn information pretty quickly this week. So, so we're hoping that we'll be able to fill some of these blanks in. But right now, there's a lot of assumptions. There's a lot of estimates in this budget. So, so take that for where we're at in the process, please. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Brett and he's going to walk us through the presentation that we prepared. Again, we'll have opportunity to pause and take some questions just on the state of the state. We will then go into some of the multi-year planning. And then also at the end of the agenda, we do have an executive session for negotiations of which some of this will lead into that conversation also. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brett and let him take over.
Good afternoon, Dr. Spizer, members of the board. So we're here to continue the conversation we've been having for what seems like months now, but I guess it's really only been a few months. So truthfully, the days and the weeks kind of run together. So if I backtrack or talk about stuff we've already talked about before, please just bear with me. So where we left off several weeks ago, the Joint Budget Committee was in the process of getting back together, going over the economic outlooks from OSPB and Leg Council and getting their proposal ready to give the legislature the information they needed to have the long bill introduced in both sides of the House. So with that, last time we went over for one of the first times, at least in recent memory, they chose the more optimistic economic forecast from Office of State Planning and Budget. And that was where they were going through and doing all the different pieces to get the numbers ready to go for the approximately $3 billion shortfall they're working with. So as everybody kind of expected, they saved K-12 for last. So the middle of last week, last Wednesday, last Thursday, was when they finished up their work, getting everything ready to go. So in regards to what the JBC does for school finance, it's important to point out that it's a very unique situation because the School Finance Act, which is a bill that's passed annually, actually sets the full detail around what our funding levels are. And the long bill that the JBC works on really sets the dollar amount or the pot of money, so to speak, that school finance has to work with. So as they went through all their age of the state budget, like I said, they saved K-12 for, towards the end. They looked at a number of grant programs and other stuff first, and then at the very end of all of it, there was a number left and that's kind of really the plug number, so to speak. So what they did was, at the end of the process, $577 million was the shortfall left to fill in the state budget. So what the Joint Budget Committee did was recommend, recommended cutting total program by that number. So at a very high level or a very simple level, what that would really mean would just be the legislature could go forward with an increase to the budget stabilization factor by $577 million and they could be done. So the long bill could be introduced as soon as tomorrow, quickly followed by school finance. It could have that language, which would take new language to increase the budget stabilization factor above the current $572 million and we could conceivably be done very quick. If that were to occur, the number that the budget stabilization factor would increase to would be greater than $1.1 billion. So it would be the highest as it has been since it started approximately 10 years ago. And I think one of the things we talked about last week is the, one of the things that the legislature did by accepting the CARES Act was agree to a maintenance of effort requirement around state aid for K-12. So if it were to go forward in that method, we would be close or the state would be close to that cap on the maintenance of effort requirement for state-level funding for K-12. So if it were to happen across the board like that, what we did was we plugged in the $577 million increase to the BS factor into the current estimated school finance formula for the upcoming year. And all things held constant as far as the factors go, the cost of living, the at-risk percentage of your, of your total, all those things, we get a estimated PPR of a little over $7,500 for PSD for next year. So it's a decrease of a little over $500 per funded people. So that's, that's the math at a very high level. Even within an increase to the BS factor alone, there's a lot more nuance in that. Being one of the floor-funded districts, we know that we're going to ebb and flow with whatever that statewide average is. We know that they're already looking at increasing the at-risk counts next year and a number of other minor things that are going to interact and play with that statewide average. So this is just kind of a placeholder to get the conversation started, but we don't really know where, where the final number will end up, even if it's taken care of in this manner. Then going into a little more complex scenarios, I think everybody's probably seen information that some of the options at the legislature's disposal, disposal is altering factors in the formula, such as changing the cost of living factor, changing the at-risk factor. Another idea that the JBC or staff analysts at the JBC have floated is potentially looking at using local mill-of-the-overrides for districts to have those in place as a way to backfill a portion of total program or free upstate resource, you know, in that regards, as far as how they would adjust the BS factor. So I think we really need to pay attention here in the upcoming, the rest of this week and next week when this information comes out and see how all those things come into play. Unfortunately, we don't have any more information at this time about how those might come into play, but we'll keep everybody up to date on those. As far as the schedule goes, they've only published two days of schedule, today and tomorrow's. So we don't really know at this point when School Finance Act or the long bill itself is going to come into play, but we anticipate it could happen very quickly. So looking at the smaller cuts that the JBC recommended for K-12, primarily it's going to be around the grant programs. And this is where some of our conversation and concern has, has came up before. So the final number that they came up with for cuts in this area is around $147 million. Approximately $135 million of that would be for the BEST program. So historically, PSD does not have a very large participation in the BEST program, primarily for smaller, more property poor schools, think Eastern Plains, San Luis Valley, those kind of situations. But the real question that remains is out of that difference of the 147 million cut and the part that is attributable to the BEST program is where does that $12 million fall? You just heard Ruben in Student Services talk a few minutes ago about, you know, for instance, for PSD, we have a number of counselors that are grant-funded as well as other areas in the district that receive those funds. So we don't have the full detail at this time as far as how those $12 million looks, but just realizing the magnitude of grant programming even within the district as well as the magnitude of $12 million in grant funds statewide, I don't think we're going to be at a super significant risk around this amount of money. If you take into account basically how much we make up of, of K-12 in the state, our portion of $12 million isn't necessarily that high, at least in comparison to the, the budget stabilization factor increase from the previous slide. So we're going to keep an eye on this, get more information as soon as we can and see how that's going to interact with those grant-funded positions and as well as non-grant-funded or excuse me, non-staffing grant-funded initiatives that also exist within the district as well. The last item that I want to bring up is not K-12 specific, but I think it's going to have long-term implications around K-12 and what we do. So if everybody will remember, two years ago, Senate Bill 18-200 was the PARA bill. That was the revamp that had the direct distribution from the state for $225 million. It had the automatic adjustment provisions in there as well as the employee rate increases that were set in law. And then, like I said, the ongoing or the, the possible rate increases that the automatic adjustment provision went into effect. So the JBC looked at, looked at possibly postponing all those adjustments or various combinations of them as whereas, as well as the actuarial analysis that went into effect or that was accounted for by making those changes. And everything as far as employer rate increases, employee rate increases, those were all left intact. But the one change they made to PARA was to temporarily suspend the $225 million direct distribution. This is very concerning to us because as soon as we feel like, you know, the plan starts to make a little bit of forward progress, they go and take a dedicated funding stream from the plan. So no idea long-term what this means, if this is going to be a multi-year situation or just for the upcoming fiscal year. But we'll definitely have to keep this in, in account as we go forward, thinking about the long-term health of PARA and that impact on PSD. For a actual detailed analysis to what this means to us, you will remember it's only been this past year, we added a line item in both revenue and expense into our budget documents. It's titled PARA on behalf revenue, I think, and PARA on behalf expense. Those are the required accounting entries that we make in our general ledger to record our proportionate share of that $225 distribution. If this stays as it is and it's not included in next year's budget, both the revenue and expense for that line item would be removed from the budget documents, as you've seen, depending on the outcome of how this goes, goes into play. So looking at the CARES Act, this is the, the stimulus money that's been earmarked for schools to an extent, depending on which version of it it is. What we've talked about previously from probably the beginning of April or so is what's being called the EASR funds, the Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Funds. So this is a little over $2 million for Pooters School District. And these funds have a longer duration as far as the period of allowable use, really all the way through our '21-'22 fiscal year. And then they are fairly broad in the range of allowable uses. They can be used to backfill lost revenue. They can be used for certain salary expenditures, items like that. So as we think about activities that would be allowed under EASR, funds that are allowable use of funds under ESEA, IDEA Part B, a lot of more broad technology applications, all the way down to detailed items such as cleaning supplies are allowable uses for these funds. So both from a spectrum of how these funds can be spent as well as a timeframe for the expenditure of these funds, these appear at a high level without knowing the full detail to be advantageous to the district. So as Ruben mentioned a few minutes ago, the reality is these allocations are out there. We know roughly what dollar amount we're talking about, but as far as the application process, the formal guidance from CDE as far as how we can truly start to spend these funds and all that, we're still working through those things and going through the detail as far as those go. So like I said, these are the funds we've known about longer, so we know a little bit more about these funds at this time. Looking at the CRF or the Coronavirus Relief Funds, this, this is the new stimulus money that was talked about in the Governor's Executive Order last week. I believe it is $510 million for K-12 that he set aside for this purpose. So our allocation is approximately $14 million. And these funds are much more restrictive and have a much shorter period of use for, for PSD. So as far as the timeframe, they need to be spent by December 31st of this coming December. So that's important to us because even though they're, they are more restrictive than the other funds, that's really only half of our fiscal year. So even if they were to have a broader use, it's not like they can go towards anything that has an annualized cost, salaries or anything like that. So within the restrictive uses, they can only be used for expenditures that are a direct result of COVID-19 and they can't be used for items that are currently budgeted for. So no backfilling of, of currently budgeted salaries, no backfilling of items that we have in our current year budget minimal. So at this point, we're waiting on more guidance around what these can be used for, but we're thinking a lot of probably larger ticket items, technology, those kind of things. So it's very easy to see where items that we've talked about before, really more in context to EASR, probably being more appropriately charged to this funding source. So as we start to talk about the Wi-Fi connectivity for students, whether that be the mobile hotspots, the Wi-Fi trucks, as we think about technology loss as far as true items go, breakage, non-return, those kind of things, those sound allowable. Software and new remote, new remote learning items, whether that be technology, software, platforms, programs, et cetera, all those things really seem to, to kind of align more towards this funding source than the other funding source. So we will keep the board up to date as we learn more information about this specific area of what they can be used for. But really, we're going to need to be very, very diligent, proactive, and thoughtful as far as how we try to utilize these two funding sources. And in the big picture, as we think about these two, I really think about the CRF funds as being a targeted, specific, one-time funding source. And then on the EASR funds, while they are one-time in nature, they appear to be a much more integral part to our budget conversation because they can be utilized for a full fiscal year. So they're probably more in tune with, with our conversation about the general fund budget, potential staffing uses and those kind of things as we go forward. So looking at the timeline and where we're at now, the session resumed today. We have our proposed budget meeting our statutory requirement here at the board meeting this afternoon. And then the next big question is when does the long bill, school finance, and the state budget get passed? Until today, everything was kind of pointing to a pretty quick turnaround. I really do think the turnaround will be kind of quick, but there truly is a lot of stuff on the legislature's plate as far as just bills they have to go through, you know, housekeeping items and everything as they get prepared to do this. So we do still think it's going to be a fairly quick turnaround, but no, no date at all, you know, as far as in mind is when we really think we'll get something. So next or two Tuesdays from now, on June 9th, we plan to bring an updated proposed budget to the board. So hopefully with any luck, that will have much firmer numbers as far as what the per people revenue could be from the state as well as more thoughtful numbers with more analytics as far as the local revenue side of the equation and what those decreases could be in that area. And then June 23rd, special meeting to adopt the budget and meet our deadline to have that done by June 30th. I just want to reiterate from before, as far as the kind of the flexibility goes, we're definitely considering absolutely, you know, without a doubt, this budget process for the upcoming year being fluid throughout the year. We're going to continue to talk about it through, you know, various stages throughout the year and we will definitely have a revised budget of some sorts, you know, in January of 2021, based on what the new reality is, given the outcome of all this. So before we go into the detail or the final detail, as far as what we're preparing for locally, previously, we've been talking about the state in total, you know, the state general fund losing $3 billion or whatever the case might be. So at this point, looking at PSD itself, based on our latest modeling, we're looking at around a $15 million decrease in state funding. So this would be mostly in School Finance Act. The grants would occur in the grant fund, so a little bit separate conversation. But approximately $15 million via the PPR, assuming that the $577 million cut is just applied across the budget stabilization factor. Now, as we get to the local side of the revenue, we've talked about this conceptually a little bit, but not really at the detail level. So I started the work on that last week or so as far as what our other local, local funding sources would look like. So we already know that we're going to have some decreases. The real easy areas to point out is interest income. We're now getting somewhere around 30 or 40 basis points in the local government, government investment pool. We're now getting somewhere around thirty or forty basis points in the local government, government investment pools, and we were close to two percent not many months ago. We know that specific ownership taxes for vehicle registrations were more than likely, using history as a guide, paper off due to people buying fewer new cars and a decrease in that industry. As far as local property taxes go, we're not necessarily anticipating a large amount of property taxes uncollected in the given year. But as recently as last week, I believe the date was May eighteenth, when I talked to the county treasurer, year-to-date collections compared to the prior year were approximately one point five percent lower. So we know that we're going to have to start to take into account some of those variable pieces in the local funding side and their interaction with the budget as well. So one of the things we're going to do over the next several weeks is get some additional information around those pieces as well to have, to have more thoughtful conversation around that going forward. The, the main other area around local funding that's probably a concern at this point, but it's going to be very difficult to measure until we get there, is what is the economic impact on our children and families and the potential increase in the at-risk count, fee waivers and those kind of things that play into some of the stuff that we do at the local level as well. The last item as far as, you know, rural, the, the uncertainty that exists is the possibility of a mid-year rescission. We mentioned before that they chose the more favorable Office of State Planning and Budget Economic Forecast. While that sounds good upfront, because it's not as painful of a conversation now, if that forecast was too optimistic and doesn't materialize, then we get to have another painful conversation in January. So basically, we just have painful conversations in the short term, I think. So, um, so that's really a concern that we have as far as what could come in the middle of this year. Then we've already had the conversation about duration and the long-term uncertainty. How long does it take to get back to normal? You know, we don't know, wish we had a crystal ball, we'll just have to monitor the situation, see how those things change. And then, we didn't mention this before, but I, I don't see a situation where para doesn't become another conversation that we have to talk about again in the future in one way, shape or form. Whether that be cost on us, cost on employees or cost on the state, you know, really, really would remain to be seen, but, but is out there. So those are the items that we're going to keep preparing for now as we go into the next couple of weeks and see what the legislature comes up with. So before we go into the detail of PSD itself and what we're at in, in the regards of our cuts, what questions or concerns are, are there around the state budget outlook?
Yeah, so you had talked. Yeah, so Brett, you had talked about, um, hopefully knowing, you know, knowing more about the Longville and the school finance bill and all that. The other thing we, I think, really need to know about is the guidance around those CARES funds, right? So to the extent that we can use them to, uh, as one-time funds to address some of the shortfalls, we really need to know about that before we adopt final budget. So is that, is, do we have any reason to believe we're going to know that in time, I guess?
I would like to think so, because I mean, I know that the state's working as quick as possible on it. Those funds are an integral part of both most school districts' twenty-twenty-one budget, as well as, to a smaller extent, their nineteen-twenty budget. So another item that I had mentioned to Dave earlier is if we're spending those funds in the current fiscal year, which is a very real possibility to some extent, we will more than likely need to do a supplemental budget in the current fiscal year for our grant funds to start with, just to get those expenditures incorporated into the current year. And then additionally, they're definitely in play for next year. So I don't see a reason why we would not have at least enough information to include, include those in our budget adoption process in, in the June timeframe for next year.
Okay, good. I would say that that's one of the biggest questions out there, Rob, amongst all the districts is, how is this going, how, how can that be utilized and we're paying attention to it and with fine detail?
So, sorry, so philosophically, uh, so, okay. So you talked about the concern about the possibility of a rescission mid-year. Pardon me, so philosophically, what are we doing? What, what thought process are we using to create the budget at the beginning of the year? Because, you know, while some things we might be able to cut in the middle of the year, cutting staff is very, is difficult. I mean, we might have to do furlough days or who knows, I mean, there may be ways to deal with it. Nevertheless, you'd like to think about it upfront. So what, what philosophically are we likely to be doing in that direction?
I think that question plays directly into the one-page overview budget sheet that we'll go over in a second. We have, we have done this with a blended approach of both ongoing cuts as well as one-time money. We're close to wrapping up the process of our ongoing cuts that we'll go over here in a few minutes. And the reality is those one-time use of funds, at least in the philosophy now, will be the backstop or the backfill for what the shortfall remains to be seen. So I think we could probably answer that question a little more thoroughly on the next, okay? I'll wait for that.
But as a highlight to that, we're prepared to deal with that range of reductions, however it may play out through the year. So it's, I agree with Brett, looking at that multi-year will be very important.
Thank you.
Have, have you guys gone through and been able to make a list of some of the things that there's really no debate that we, we'll be able to use some of this CARES money for, like so the, the Wi-Fis and, well, yeah, the Wi-Fi stuff, any of the cleaning solutions? And have, have we been able to go through and see how much that money we're?
I wouldn't say that we've gone through and looked at it as far as a dollar amount perspective, but there's really two things happening. First, our, our finance staff, the controller and the accountants that are helping her out, they've already made an internal matrix that is basically a combination of the various resources that exist, whether they be federal resources or CDE resources as far as the allowable use of funds go. So CDE is going to publish a formal matrix very shortly, but we're working off this internal document in the short term. And then as far as, as far as the, the items and the costs go, we're having broad conversations about what items we've already purchased that would be allowable or that we think would be appropriate to charge there within our budget planning and philosophy that we're taking. But we don't have a true dollar amount of items that have been expensed so far that we would be looking to move to the grant itself.
Just something we'll be, we'll be coming back with some of that information as we gather it.
Okay, and I have heard from CDE and, and from CASB at times about the, the creative thinking that might be needed on some of this to?
I, I would, I would like to put in the room if I could at this point, because I think that people are thinking creatively. And I heard a lot of creative thinking last week. I would really caution us to make sure we, and that's exactly why I said we're paying attention to this with a very fine point, because we need to know rules of the game before we start thinking too creatively. But we're prepared to do some creative thinking once we understand those rules.
Okay, so looking at the, the final slide, it has been updated to take into account where we were at in the final kind of the area, the cuts we were working on. So if everybody will remember, what we have already really gone over and talked about having completed is the teacher capacity money for the ongoing cuts as well as the school cuts. And then we, we've talked about four-eight. So looking in the ongoing area, the two areas that we were still working on was the six percent central cuts as well as the central program and restricted budget cuts. So if everybody thinks back to two weeks ago, at the, at the last meeting, for the six percent central cuts, we were looking at a range of approximately four point three million dollars. So I think I told everyone that we had generated some budget worksheets. We were thinking about all the central departments in both terms of staffing and non-staffing or operating budgets, as well as program and restricted budgets that were, that were kind of being, being thought about separately. So within the six percent central budgets, the number that was four point three million, as soon as we got into those, we quickly realized that by lumping all non-school costs into a single pot wasn't really, it wasn't apples to apples, so to speak. So when I talk about that, there's central costs that are truly central and that would be, you know, administration, the business office, those kind of things that are generally thought of as central. But we also had another, a, a number of other areas that were really instructional in nature, even though they were centrally managed. So we're talking about the centrally managed integrated services staff, the English language development department, career tech, gifted and talented. So think about all those areas that might have one or two people that work in the central office, but a lot of those funds and/or staffing are truly deployed out to the schools. So we decided to disaggregate the instructional side of the central expenditures into one area or pot, and then in the other area have our true central cost. So what that did was really lower the, lower the amount of savings at a true six percent cut that could be achieved using that method. So thinking about our kids, thinking about the issues that we're going to face next year, thinking about, you know, what the new normal looks like, we really looked at those, and I say we, the assistant superintendents and cabinet really looked at the instructional side of those central budgets with a fine tooth comb. So they met with the directors for ELD, for, for integrated services, for those departments that fall underneath the, the instructional side of the central. And they really went over cost-saving efficiencies, what could be done to reduce costs without impacting kids, without impacting levels of service that were being provided to those kids and, and really tried to do the best they could to, to streamline that process. So looking at that side of the equation, we have savings of around three hundred and sixty thousand dollars that were identified. Then the other side of the equation is the true central cost. So we have a savings of around two point seven million dollars in the other areas that are central. And so when I say those areas, I'm talking, uh, finance, HR, the communications department, the IT department, the operations department, as well as a couple of the, some of the LST, the, I just went blank on the, what LST stands for, the leader, the learning services team, sorry. Um, as well as the central pieces of LST, and I'm thinking like professional development and some of those, some of those kind of pieces that are truly central in nature. So we've identified six percent cuts in that area for a total of two point seven million. And then the final piece that really makes up central is going to be the early childhood department, the portion of early childhood that is made up by CPP, Colorado Preschool Program, and ECSE, which is Early Childhood, Early Colorado Special Ed. So those components are around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So when you add all those pieces up, we have a savings of around three point two million in those areas. And like we talked about before, those are really a blend between both, both staffing as well as operating budgets. So by that number being a little bit lower than it was before, we had to be a lot more thoughtful and strategic about how we looked at the central program and restricted budgets. So two weeks ago, when we met, we were thinking probably six hundred thousand dollars of savings in those areas ongoing. After going through that process with cabinet this past week, we're looking at ongoing savings of around one million dollars for the, for the central program and restricted budgets. And then, uh, a little bit further down under one time, we have another one point eight earmarked for those. So if we're thinking about the central program and restricted budgets that are ongoing, we're talking about a range of items. So anything from, you have to forgive me, I'm looking over my sheet here. We have two hundred thousand dollars of ongoing cuts for textbooks, that, that's, that's a pretty good example there. We have two hundred thousand dollars of ongoing cuts for, for fuel in the transportation department. So it's important to point out that some of these ongoing cuts are truly, can truly be ongoing for as long as we choose them to be. Some of them are ongoing, in the case of diesel fuel, that's dependent upon a variable that we can't control. So at this point, while we're thinking the demand and the price of diesel fuel might be, might remain low for most fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, those items might have to be adjusted as soon as twenty-one, twenty-two. So a lot of these things are, they're really fluid and they're really, it's more of a snapshot in time as far as how these cuts are made. And they got to, they, they will need to be part of the bigger, uh, ongoing conversation as far as what those look like. You know, we had some adjustments to, to Summer Institute, ongoing budget's a good example, some instructional tech for PD, then we had a hundred and ten thousand dollars of ongoing reductions in the capital project area. So just really a broad, a broad spectrum of ongoing cuts, really across all those areas that both are, are truly central in nature, as well as have some sort of overarching impact, either district-wide or more towards the school level. Then, as we go down to the one-time area of the budget worksheet, you can see there's now a new row titled central program and restricted budgets. So this is a concept that we talked about before, but we hadn't actually put a dollar amount really to, to paper yet. So what this is, is looking at those same budgets, we viewed it from the lens of what can we temporarily postpone to basically free up one-time resource to answer, really to answer Rob's question? So as we're thinking about this and our plan, we're talking fifteen million or so to twenty-eight million, worst-case scenario. We've identified around thirteen million of ongoing cuts. And the real question is, how and in what order do we get to our worst-case scenario in the event something like that happens? So we went through the same budget sheet I was describing, identifying large dollar amount items that we could temporarily postpone. The reality is they're mostly in textbooks. Robert and his team thought we could save around one million dollars for a single year to kind of adjust the adoption process and, you know, kind of move those around a little bit. And then the other big component is in the capital projects area, and we're looking at between six hundred and seven hundred thousand dollars of one-time savings, you know, in the short term in that area. I would like to point out for both, for both textbook, textbooks and the capital projects, these are not a long-term solution, these are something that you, we're talking about them now. You will hear us talk about them again, because at some point in the future, we can't not do these things forever. So we, we've really earmarked in as one-year only at this point, so we'll be having this conversation in, in some order in the future around the one-time funds, then out of these budget areas. Then under, looking under the one-time use of funds, the other areas are really not changed. We have the two thousand and sixteen MLO, we have the unallocated portion of the two thousand and nineteen MLO, then the carryover sweeps that we've talked about before. So you can see that looking at these pieces, we are still well-positioned. You know, if we were to have a, a worst-case scenario kind of come towards us, but as far as how we're looking at them, at least in the proposed budget, based on what we know now, we're looking at a revenue reduction next year of around eighteen million dollars. So if, if, if that's what comes to fruition, we know we have around thirteen million dollars in cuts and then we have enough one-time money to fill the gap. So one of the things that we'll need to continue to do as we work through this process over the next couple of weeks and we get more information, you know, is really align and define, you know, the one-time uses of funds and how we're, you know, how we're going to approach that. And then the bigger part of this, or an additional part of it, is I, I still feel like even when we adopt the budget at the end of June, it's still a snapshot in time based on what we know then. And I can't stress enough how fluid this situation is going to remain and how even though as of June twenty-third, we might say we only need, you know, the top three or four of these items, we also have to really, you know, stay aware of the situation and make sure that we maintain our positive positioning, so to speak, to weather whatever a potential mid-year rescission throws at us in the December, January timeframe as well. And then that conversation really goes into the following year at that point. So as we look to twenty-one, twenty-two and the out years, we're really modeling the same things before. The latest information as far as the economic forecast goes is the state will start to see some sort of recovery by twenty-one, twenty-two. So you can see that our modeling really is kind of tapering, tapering up in accordance with what the economic forecasts say. So you can see that our modeling really is kind of tapering tapering up in accordance with what the economic forecasts say. But at this time, the reality is. A whole lot can happen in the next year. So I think we're just going to have to continue to have continuous conversation. Just around this entire arena over the over the next year or so. Did I miss anything, Dave?
Brett, you're thorough as usual. I'm very fortunate to have you this district. Yeah, I think that I think what what Brett's laid out here is our best thinking and it also allows some flexibility. It's our best shot at the budget right now. Again, like we said, we're gonna we're gonna be able to come back next board meeting. With hopefully some more facts behind the assumptions of which we'll see where they lay out. But as you can see. I think we've been adequately prepared to deal with. Not only what we think is going to happen, but also the opportunity for more uncertainty in the future. I will remind us that we will be able to go through this in much more detail with executive session. Where we'll talk about negotiations, impacts on negotiations as well as. As impacts on the budget and personnel because it all ties together. So. We're we're going to be able to go through more detail where yet there. I would also say. Because of the speed at which we're doing this. It's it's really unheard of and I would encourage. Board members to continue to ask questions. I know we didn't get to all the specific questions that were posed. For the packet, but we'll have time to answer questions. And we'll also have time to answer, you know, detailed questions if. If it's if it's needed that somebody needs to come in and just talk to us one on one, we're happy to do that too. Typically, we would have more time to do that process work, but. Speed at which we're going, we understand that that's. It's near impossible at this point. So. I don't think you missed anything, Brett, and I think we can turn it over to any questions the board may have.
I had a question. So a question on the. Curriculum that you were talking about spending for your other textbooks. Is that as far as what was budgeted for the twenty twenty one? So for the next school year or is that what we're talking about later on today? I just want it to be clear.
That is for next school year.
Okay, thank you.
That is in the current year budget that has already been appropriated. So those items to be discussed, the funding is already there in the current year. And the conversation and the dollar melt that I mentioned is for the two thousand twenty twenty one potential appropriation. So we're really.
Yeah, can you piggyback on that? So. Clear about that. So when we talk about a curriculum this evening.
Brett, Brett, would it be fair to say, I I get where you're going with the questions, would it be fair to say that? And I can't remember everything that's on the agenda, so I want to be a little careful here, but. Curriculum items that are on the agenda are not are. Exclusive of a plan we presented. So so they already contemplate those things happening.
Yes, that's correct.
I mean funnel somewhere onto the twenty twenty one. Budgets, right?
This is Naomi. So I just want to make sure that I understand the the timeline that we're talking about here. But first I want to say just a huge thanks to you two and I'm still hoping that you'll switch to herbal tea. This has got to be just an incredibly stressful situation and. And I appreciate the work that that you all put into this. I also really appreciate the work that all of our building principals have done with their teams to figure out how those five percent cuts are going to happen. With the least painful impact to our little learners. And our big learners, I know that it's it's never fun. To cut money out of your budget and I think that a lot of thought has gone into that. So thank you for all of that. So it is currently, oh, my goodness, I have to actually look at the calendar here, May twenty sixth. And so we're going to do the final, the really loose air quotes around final budget vote on June twenty third. And in the interim, we'll find out more about how the CRF fourteen million dollars can be spent. And we need to make sure that. We can be fluid quarterly during the twenty 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 one school year based on. Whoever knows what is going to happen in the future. Is that all that fair?
Yes.
I guess, well, I I can. Yeah. So could you go back to the three year view for a second? Yeah, so the assumption that. We need twenty two million or in particular thirteen million only in the. Third year are pretty. I mean, their their assumption is like in capital letters there, right? So. If we have to. Well, if we have to go more than twenty eight million this year or more than twenty two or thirteen in the following years. There's going to be some additional pain somewhere, right? And given that eighty five percent of our budget or something thereabouts, you know, you can tell me the exact percentage, but is personnel. The likelihood is that since we're using a lot of our one time funds there and unless the federal government comes through with some big pile of money. That can be used over multiple years. The likelihood is there's going to be some pain in the personnel world in in some way or another. Is that a fair?
Strong possibility that there could be an outcome, Rob.
I just want I just want everybody to understand that we're doing our best. I mean. We we are absolutely on board with getting the fourteen point seven million dollars to the teachers and classified staff as has been promised to the voters and to. And to the staff involved. We are doing it in at least according to this plan, we're doing it in the first year. You know, the is that right? I mean, this plan assumes that we're putting the full fourteen point seven million in in the twenty twenty one year, right? Right, so. Yeah, there's there's so let me be clear, there's been never been any conversation that I've been involved in that indicates that that fourteen point seven would go to anything other than. Than salaries. There's been some discussion back and forth about whether we should. How we should apply it in the first year versus the second year and whatever, and maybe those conversations are ongoing and I don't want to get into the details of that. But all I'm saying here is that that because we're honoring that commitment, there isn't a lot of flexibility. We don't have those funds to work with. So that's fine. And the net of that is that maybe in the twenty one, twenty twenty one or twenty twenty two years, we're going to have some. Challenges on a personnel level that. You know, given that how much of our budget is involved in that, is that is that is that sort of a fair? Concern, put it that way?
I think, yeah, I was going to say, I think you hit the nail on the head as always, Director President.
Okay, thank you. I just I just want to make sure we're all on the same page and that the people who are listening understand that there is things that can be done now and there are things that can be done later and there are things we don't know later. And the net of the things we don't know later is there may be pain, but and we just know what it is. And in the end, we're going to be looking out for what's what's best for the students and the system and the employees in the system. So. We'll have to make that balance as we.
It it also will allow us to. If that next level of reduction is necessary, you know, I don't know, Brett hit on this too heavy, but. We fully plan on, you know, entering next year, reevaluating the budget, doing, we'll have more time. Able to do some things like zero based budgeting, evaluating the budget, just some ideas to float out there, but. We'll we'll be able to be prepared one way or the other.
So one of the things that I don't see on this sheet here are the S R funds. The two point two million that have to be used by twenty twenty two. And because those are the if I understood correctly, we can use those to backfill. Is there somewhere on this that we should be putting that two point two million so that we can sort of see that we we still at least have that?
So the S R funds are because they're federal funds, they exist in a separate area. So if you actually went and looked at the PDF budget document, they are accounted for in the designated private purpose. Grant fund, I believe is the technical name of it. So they're truly over there. We don't co mingle them in this situation because they would skew the number as far as the general fund. But you're absolutely correct. Every dollar that we put over there is one dollar less we spend in the general fund. And that's why I mentioned a few minutes ago on the S R fund specifically, they are an integral part of this conversation. Because the reality is, I hate to use the saying, you know, a dollar saved is a is a dollar, whatever it is, but. But that's that's exactly this conversation.
That's exactly it. And we. We just, again, I think what we're doing is taking a conservative approach here, understanding that. As we look at the rules and understand what that means, there will be a little bit more flexibility. But again. Even with that. Even with, let's say, the two million applied. We still don't make the eighteen million dollar shortfall that we're looking for and the the other. The other funds explicitly can't be used in that way. So we'll be looking at that too.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted.
Thank you for bringing it up.
So following up on what Kristen said then, once we understand that we can use those two, what we can use those, just to pick a number, two million dollars, I don't know, I don't know, whatever the number is, right? What we can use that fund those funds for, does that mean then that the the twenty eight number? Or sorry, the eighteen number may in fact become a sixteen number or the twenty eight number may become a twenty six number on this page? Because I I agree with Kristen, I think somehow at least we as leaders of the district need to under and I think frankly, our public needs to understand. How we're how that those dollars. Effect how much we have to cut or don't have to cut. So I I understand you don't want to that there that there are financial things, financial. I don't know, for lack of a better word, accounting things going on here about how these things are represented in various plots. But if the net is that we get two million dollars in that we can use to backfill other things on at least on a one time basis, does that? Will that affect the twenty eight million dollar or eighteen million dollars or whatever that first number bottom line is? And I guess I'd like to understand that when you do. And I assume that's what Kristen wants to, so you know.
Yes, we can. We can definitely talk more about it as we learn more about it. A lot of it depends upon the period of implementation. So for instance, if we were to spend all those funds by June thirtieth of this current fiscal year. That would really because it's a dollar to dollar direct ratio, as you mentioned. That would really increase our unassigned reserves in the current year by the dollar amount of the Easter funds. And in that case, we would have a higher reserve level to talk about utilizing potentially in the twenty twenty one fiscal year. The alternative is we could choose to use all those funds in the upcoming fiscal year. They become a much, much broader part of this exact conversation. So it really depends upon the use of those funds and how we implement them and the timeframe. But yes, we can we can take that into account.
Right, and as you understand and if you could make sure that we understand it, that'd be great. The other question I'll I'll just ask, and I've asked before and I asked an email. And I know you alluded to it, but I'm not real clear about it, is this question about. We have ongoing capital expenses that we have generally funded up, generally funded. Funded out of the general funds, sorry. And some or all of those funds, I'll make an assertion here and you can tell me I'm wrong. Could be. Taken from bond funds. Because those are also capital funds, right? And we don't typically do that. And again, this is way more than I know about finance, but I understand we don't typically do that because of the depreciation. Times associated with the funds and and the payback associated with the funds and whatever. These are not normal times. So I guess I would like to understand better and it doesn't have to be here if you're if you want to do it offline in some kind of document or in some other conversation. But I would like to understand better. Where are those dollars are being plugged in or not being plugged in? And if they're not being plugged in, why not? In a in a pretty clear way. So it's up to you how you respond to that, but I'm gonna.
So, yeah, yeah. So so in the in the current budget, we have around one point seven million dollars budgeted for capital projects. And then in the upcoming year budget. It's a lot lower. It's going to be. I'm blank off the top of my head, but it's six hundred thousand or so. But regardless of what number you go with. The reality is the majority of the expenditures that exist in those budgets would be allowable underneath a bond underneath the building fund. So you're exactly right. Let's let's just use the current year because I know that number is one point seven million dollars. We have approximately one point seven million dollars of allowable expenditures that we could choose to move to our capital projects building fund. The real question is, what is the allowable budget that exists in the capital projects building fund? And at least in the short term, while we're waiting on the GMPs for for the final, I believe it's the prospect site and all that. I I personally don't feel like I have enough information or enough knowledge, not knowing what our final car costs are. To be able to make, you know, a recommendation like that. But at the end of the day. Whenever we're done getting our final prices and we know what the true expenditures are going to be in the capital projects fund. If there is remaining budget in that fund, we can absolutely move allowable expenditures from the general fund. Over to the capital projects fund to meet the criteria.
And we'll know the cap, we'll know the GMP business in what August.
That's what I've understood is August is when we'll know the final GMPs for, I believe we're waiting on prospect.
Okay, thank you.
I think Brett, what you just described is a midyear strategy that we can deploy. Midyear into the budget, once we get those final GMPs done.
Okay, thank you.
Can't get my mouse over here. Understanding that this is a. You know, this isn't necessarily the budget that we're doing. Couple of things that I'm going to ask for. One is I would definitely like to be able to find some time that I could get with. At least Brett or somebody to kind of go over more of these line items so I can have better understanding of that. But something that was in this proposed budget, which I really appreciated was the. The last two columns on page four that showed the changes. For the nineteen twenty estimate to the twenty twenty one budget. But it was only on the revenue side and if we could do that on the. The spending side too, that'd be great. I know you listed off a bunch of things that you're you're pulling from central and that. Does help quite a bit. I could just, for me personally, seeing it in writing, I can. Understand it better maybe and grasp it. So I'd really appreciate if it's possible just to add that to this or to give us a better understanding of. Still what these cuts are in a written form besides just reading them out. Because it gives us me a better idea of what we're cutting and what we want to look to fill in when we get the money back.
I will get those added in and if they will fit due to formatting or anything, we can definitely provide those as a supplement.
DJ Brett and I talked about that a little bit before and I just didn't get a chance to send the responses, but. We see no reason to not get that information to you and if it doesn't fit in a clean format on budget document, we'll we'll get it to you as a supplemental, just as he said. Makes it makes sense at this point, though, that something would be helpful for you. Great, thank you, DJ.
Yeah, it's not, it's not.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, uh, so much a question as a thank you. I, I, I know other people have said thank you. I want to say thank you both. I mean, I get the perspective here, and I get the perspective also on the audit committee, which we attended not too long ago, and there's a lot of really, uh, hard work, uh, by a lot of people, the two of you, plus the, the staff that reports to you, as mentioned, the building, the people in the buildings, the people in the central offices. Uh, and it's, it's, as always, done with a lot of integrity and a lot of thought for the, for the benefit of the students and the system as a whole. And so thank you very much for that, and, um, we'll continue to support you as we get, as, as you and we go through this, uh, process over the next probably several years.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate the thank you, um, during, this is going to be such a thankless process you're doing it. I don't know how many hundreds of times more than you normally would in the last three months. Um, so, but to, to do it and to do it in a format that's easily understandable for someone who's not, you know, terribly financially literate, at least at this level. Uh, I really appreciate it. Um, so, thank you.
And the, the behind-the-scenes, uh, time you're offering, I think that's incredibly helpful to make this process move through. So Kristen, did I see your hand go up, or are you good? Great, and I'm sure that, um, in a gen, this thing will discuss probably doing more of these two-by-twos.